We will go ahead and do a sound check with our commissioners. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Birkenfall, present. Commissioner Dick? All right. Commissioner Gammy.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Quintanilla. Thank you. Commissioner Ruiz.
Present.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wu.
Present.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so welcome everyone. This is the briefing session for the Planning Commission for the July 9, 2024 meeting. Briefing means that cases are heard as a preliminary presentation for initial questions from the commission. Public testimony will not be taken at this time. Just a reminder to speak clearly as you present. And we'll go ahead and get started. We'll read through the agenda here for briefing today. Briefing for July 9, 2024. We have four items and they are as follows. Briefing item A, Council Bill 2023-1698 and 1723, This is a zoning code text amendment or text map amendment and preliminary land development plan for the expansion of Bakery Square, specially planned District 9. This is the second of two briefings. Agenda item B is DCP-MPZC-2024-00399, amendment to the preliminary land development plan for specially planned District 10, Hazelwood Green, to permit type E development to amend signage and wayfinding section and other miscellaneous amendments. Agenda item C, DCP-MPZC-2023-01692. This is a zoning map amendment to rezone certain parcels along North Negley Avenue, bound by Rural Street and Rippey Street from RM, resident multi-unit residential, moderate density, and R2M to RM-VH. That's multi-unit residential, very high density. Briefing agenda item D, Council Bill 2024-0525, Zoning map amendment referred to the Planning Commission by the City Council to rezone certain parcels generally bound by Hamilton Avenue, Dunfermline, Dunfermline, Fermline Street, Tioga Street, Cinnabar Way, and Zenith Way from R1A-VH to LNC. And this is in the Homewood South neighborhood. We're going to move up to agenda item A for briefing. I'm going to read that in. And that is Council Bill 2023-1698 and 1723, and DCP-MPZC-2023-00941 and 00979. Zoning code text or map amendment and preliminary land development plan for the expansion of Bakery Square, specially planned District 9. Again, second of two briefings in the East Liberty and Larimer neighborhoods presenting. That is Ms. Reyes.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As the chairwoman noted, this is the second of two briefings. So I will just quickly remind folks that the PLDP will come before Planning Commission presumably in two weeks for vote for their vote and approval. And then on the anything that's the legislative text, Planning Commission will be making a referral to City Council. The applicant had taken staff's comments from briefing and also the comments and questions that the commissioners had made at the last briefing and attempted to address them in this presentation or address each issue point by point in this presentation. So I will turn it over to the applicant.
Good afternoon. My name is John Kamen and I'm here as counsel for Walnut Capital. With me as well is Abby Mountain, who is our architect and planner from Strata Architects. I know you have a packed agenda today and know that I'm 50% of it. So I will try not to make more time than waste more time than I can. As Kate said, we did prepare for this presentation essentially an outline of the questions that have been asked to us by staff and the commission and wanted to work through those as the second part of our briefing. So I'm not going to go through essentially what we went through for, you know, an hour and a half last time, but wanted to just address your questions so that we could make sure that everyone was comfortable with our answers and be prepared for the hearing in action next week. So if you don't mind, if we could advance to the next slide, please, and then the next slide. So one of the additional, one of the first questions that was asked was really about proposed street activations. And that discussion was really focused along, I believe, Penn Avenue and what we were doing on our other frontages. Abby, you want to talk about a little bit what this shows?
Yeah, because really the change to this one that happened from the previous iteration is just in that middle north-south road. On the left-hand side of that road, both sides of that building are being shown as active frontage and they weren't in the previous version of this diagram.
So we think this answers a couple of questions about what's active and also helps to show how we're thinking about the overall process. Next slide, please. So one of the other questions that we have was really a surface parking question. I know that there have been some questions from staff about what is the appropriate level of surface parking? We went back and studied it and thought that, you know, first of all, as you know, it's essentially a suburban strip mall with a, you know, seas of surface parking right now. And obviously that's not desirable and that's not the best, highest and best use. But we do think for the types of users we're going to have, being grocers and others who are there, that some sort of surface parking is necessary. And also that we don't want to build more parking than we have to build because of the structures that we have. So what we've proposed is that surface parking should be limited to 20, the greater of 25% of the total number of parking spaces within the applicable sub-district for 25% of the total number of parking spaces provided for each development that's part of an FLDP. So we were at max at 25%. We think that that strikes a balance. Look, it's not the highest and best use of our land to have it all be parking. But we do think that there needs to be some parking, surface parking available. The other thing that we're looking into and added this definition here is looking at parking carousels. I know the planning commission is familiar with them. We've been to zoning board. We've erected the number of them in the strip. And we're hopeful that that could be a short-term interim solution for us too in terms of the parking carousels. It's something that happens. So we just wanted to make it clear that if we do erect these carousels, that doesn't count as surface parking, even though they're mounted on the, on the surface itself. So that's just a clarification definitions that we had. Abby, do we want to add anything to that? The next question, next slide, please, was on high wall signage and design guidelines. We just put in just some clarifications, just staff questions about 45 feet high, not to exceed six feet. And the projecting not more than 18 inches from the facade. And just some of these items to clarify what is available or appropriate. Next slide. Abby, I'm going to turn the step backs over to you.
Okay. There was a question from staff asking us to reconsider step backs beyond the ones that we have at Penn and East Liberty Boulevard. We feel that along those existing frontages where there is other fabric in place, that the step backs proposed are appropriate and make sense to work with the existing fabric that's there. But we're requesting the flexibility of not having them in the internal streets where there is no other fabric that we're relating to and allow us the flexibility to create the street section in there that whatever the final development is, what makes sense for that.
And then on the parking structure screening, we're talking about, we'll screen the facades that face the primary function frontages. And then there was a question about a sidewalk along Dahlone. We don't own, what we have there for right-of-way is very limited. The Port Authority owns part of that land. So it's not feasible. We could go back and look at the geometry on that. Next slide, please. So this was a staff comment that came back to us about looking, how do we make sure that we've incorporated some of the community commitments into the FLDPs? And what we thought would be the easiest to do, because each one is different, is that as part of our overall statement of compliance, we would just detail each of these items. Each of the commitments that we made, the meetings that we've had, the things that we've done. We think that that will show on a, you know, this is a 10-year project, right? So we're going to need to update as each FLDP comes forward, how we've done, what we've done. And we think if we just incorporate that with our statement of compliance, which we're filing anyhow, that should give the commission the answer since it's looking forward to show we've done what we said we were going to do. Next slide, please. Abby, you want to talk about the sections?
Yeah, there was a request to update the sections to show the full buildable envelope. So that's what this shows. There were four sections that were in the existing PLDP. So we'll start with the proposed Penn Avenue section. That shows the full proposed buildable height of 150. And then the setback at 85 feet, the step back, I'm sorry, a 10-foot step back at that location. So again, this is along the existing Penn Avenue. You've got the Village of Shady Side on the other side. So you can see how that step back starts to interface with them. On the East Liberty Boulevard section, you'll see actually sections C and D, sub-districts, both C and D front on that. So the lighter colored one is sub-district C with the, again, 150-foot max height and then the step back at 85. And then in D beyond, you see the 210-foot maximum building envelope there. Nothing changed at the street level. It was just extending the, the section to show the full height. Next slide, please. And then these are the other two in the internal road B, which is the north-south road on the plan. That shows the 150-foot height in sub-district C and the 210-foot height in sub-district D. You can see here that we are not proposing step backs in the buildable envelope. And then the last section is that proposed road A. And again, no step back here. And it shows that max of 210 up against the busway. Next slide.
Next slide, please. So we're in the Commissioner question section. One of the questions was talking about overall connectivity. Abby, do you want to talk a little bit about this slide?
Yeah. So the only thing we did here was overlay the existing SP9 district, which is in orange. And then the proposed portions of the SP9 expansion are in the areas in blue. And that was the request, just to clarify how these connections interface with the district.
Right. And one of the things that we wanted you to see here as well is that it does enhance the vehicular circulation and it also allows for more of a community connection between neighborhoods. Everyone doesn't have to come up to Penn Avenue to go ahead and come in. They can use the Dahlone connection across. There's a connection on the other side of the tracks that comes over. So we think that this breaks up what was, you know, a super block, right? This like this breaks it up on a horizontal basis that will ultimately allow for greater connections from East Liberty, Shady Side, all the way through to Homewood. So we think that that is, excuse me, as you can tell, I'm in the middle of an asthma attack. As we're going through here, we think that that is a real benefit that this overall master plan does to allow these things to go ahead and those connections. And there are things that are not part of this, the trail, other bike ways that we're looking at to go ahead and add multimodal type connections. Next slide, please. This is the, Abby, you want to talk about this?
This is just another overlay, just zooming in on some of that street. Again, showing the portion of the expansion of the district and how this street grid would overlay in there.
Next slide, please. So we did propose some zoning texts that came out as well based on our understanding that we reached with the mayor's office. The way we're structuring the affordability right now is 15% of that will be onsite affordable. That's in addition to the commitments that we've made in the CBA for build 100 and off-site affordability. The way that we're looking at that right now is 10% of those units will be eligible at 50% of AMI and then 5% will be at the 80 to 120. Now, the way that this is working, and this is set forth in the zoning text, is this is essentially conditioned upon us being able to work through participation in what they're calling the voucher program, the housing choice voucher program. Because that provides, that with some other gap funding, provides a level of subsidy that makes the project feasible. So we're doing the 5% onsite, no matter what, assuming we can get the participation. And we can't, it's a process. You have to apply. You have to be awarded. You have to run, jump through a bunch of hoops to get that done. And you can't really do that until you have a project. So the framework that we've worked through with understanding the mayor's office is that we're going to make those applications and assuming we're accepted to participate in the program and that funding is there for it, then that's how we're going to get to 15% onsite. Next slide, please.
There's a request from one of the commissioners to clarify what that pedestrian zone that we were outlining with the zoning text might look like. This is a blow-up of the plan. It reflects that same section. That's along Penn Avenue. And this also reflects what Domi's current plan is for changes to Penn Avenue. So you'll see, starting at the south side of the road, you've got your existing sidewalk, then there is a six-foot bike lane, planted buffer zone. Then you get your traffic lanes. Then you've got another planted buffer zone, a six-foot bike lane there. And then our 15-foot sidewalk zone that we're proposing. You will see that that sidewalk zone is within the right-of-way. Or sorry, it's outside of the right-of-way. That's part of our 15-foot setback from the right-of-way along Penn Avenue. And then that would all just be, you know, nice sidewalk pedestrian amenities. And as you saw on some of the diagrams earlier, that would be active frontages, the transparency along there.
And our goal is to, we understand Nabisco building is where it is, but our goal is on this extension to be able to have a much better sort of public realm. That's why we've agreed to the 15 feet and stacking it the way that we. Yeah. Next slide, please. How would you take that from there?
Sure. So this was a request to show what the maximum buildable envelope might look like right now within the plan that, you know, proposed plan that we're currently submitting and what that might look like in context. So you can see to the south there, that large building is the future Meridian. That building is 82 feet tall currently. All the buildings on our site are shown as that maximum built footprint with the exception of the existing post office Trader Joe's building. And then as you go over by Bakery Square, the tower of the existing Nabisco building, the top of that's at 125. The main part of that building in the Bakery Square 2, which is right across the street from it, both of those are at 80. The new Bakery Square 3 is at 130 feet tall.
And again, we don't think that we're going to be at this height. This is a max build. We just want to have the flexibility to have what we want. We've talked a lot over the past two and a half years with the community about density and what density does for us. So I think we're going, you know, we're going to build what's feasible to build. But we wanted to make sure that the envelope was set, that if somebody came in and wanted a marquee tower or wanted something that was unique and special, that we had the ability to go ahead and to do that. We're not going to build it if it's not warranted. But I think we wanted to have the flexibility from a planning standpoint that if something really special could be done there, that we have the ability to do it. So I know we ran through that quickly or maybe not so quickly in everyone's mind. But I think we caught the staff questions and commissioner questions, but happy to take your questions now.
So Commissioners, at this time, if you have additional questions or want or have some new concerns, now's our time to say that. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
All right. I understand that you're showing those signs and saying like they're masses and it's not how it's supposed, it's not a guarantee. But I wonder if there's a way to just articulate it a little bit. So that shows that being strategic and where you will allow that scale to be where it's at. Because looking at some of those street skates, I'm just detecting how massive it was right next to the pedestrian. And I know like there's going to be some, some design that articulates how they really engage the building to kind of like make that scale disappear. But I think just for like kind of a safety perspective, it'd be like, okay, we're going to catch all our bases. I think if you could show like an iteration of that, that just kind of like, how should I say prioritizes, where you really reach those scales, I think that would.
We can totally do that. I know exactly what you're asking for. We can do that. No problem.
Piggyback on that comment. Might you be able to go back to the slide that at least please and thank you for conversation sake? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, I think that would be good with the massing, please.
Good slide. 15, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. So along with same kind of line of questions, I just want to understand. You mentioned that these are the max build for these footprints. Is there anything in the PLDP tying these footprints to this size? Or I'm sorry, or phrased another way, are these the required footprints?
No.
Okay.
They are not. So right now, we, the only building that I should say is along in the planning process is the one that is closest to Meridian. It's our phase one. Right now, we're planning that for how high, Abby?
12 stories.
12 stories, so.
Which is around 140. And that is shown at 210. So I, I think some of the concern looking at this overall density is we don't have these step backs on the upper levels. I don't see it on that building we're talking about right now. And we're not necessarily tying you to these footprints. You could have a block that could be, you know, much larger than these buildings in terms of footprint. And so without some more kind of guide rails, as Commissioner Gammy was mentioning about where that goes, it's just hard to understand how that pedestrian realm is going to be protected. I don't think anybody is opposed to density here, but we do want some visual infrastructure. So it's not cavernous. So that's what I would like to understand a little bit better. That's, I think, partly why we're pushing for some of those step backs is because we're not tying you to these footprints. This is a district, not a site-by-site plan. So some more comfort there would be very helpful. There are some limitations written into the PLDP under design guidelines that are about maximum building length. And those do come from, you know, kind of some of the other newer zoning that's been being created around here. There, there are requirements for modulating the facade some in, along the primary and secondary frontages, which is pretty much every frontage in these plans.
Yeah, it's page 52 of the PLDP and 50, I believe.
Maximum building length is 325 feet.
And then there's also separation to, Rachel, to go to your point, that there's separation of at least 30 feet between buildings. And then in terms of, as Abby said, of the articulation and the facade, those things are worked in. So you're not going to end up with a massive blob. Nobody wants that.
Right. Yeah, there's pieces in here about that no facade adjacent to a street shall contain a non-articulated condition greater than 50 linear feet and then has, you know, limitations of that depth. It can't be, you know, less than six inches. So some of that other language that's been written into some of the zoning code. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting.
Did you want to? No, no, I think, I think my, my only real concern is just like understanding where exactly that height is. Because while I understand that they do have these, as we've learned from other projects that have come past our door, that monolithic nature can still come through even with that caverning. And I, I think like Bakery Square has such beautiful projects that are already there that, you know, I just don't want it to go backwards. So I'm just like being very intentional with where the height is. I prefer.
Okay, Commissioners, additional thoughts or questions? Commissioner Quintanilla?
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. I hope, I hope my audience going through, okay? Just the one comment that I just want to make. And again, going back to my comment about parking, I do understand that surface parking has to happen, you know, because it is something that we need to have anywhere in our cities, right? It's just where it happens. And so just about, and I'm specifically thinking, talking about the parking lot in front of Trader Joe's. If there is anything that could be done on the sidewalk so that maybe mask it or maybe do something with that parking so that it's just not cars standing there, you know? And I always, I always say this, and I keep reiterating the same kind of ideas because, you know, when pedestrian walking, it's really fantastic when they're walking next to a building that is active, which I think is what you guys are trying to do here with some of the ground floor of your buildings. And then all of a sudden, they go into a space that is just parking lots. It's actually, it's actually complete attracts people from walking there, you know? And I mean, this is not just me personal. This is just like a common known fact. So if there's anything you guys can do about the first line of the parking lot, being able to actually mask it or do something with it so that it's actually, it's better for pedestrians. I think that will go a long way into helping, into making that whole entire stretch of Penn Avenue as I mentioned before, that right now it feels like a raceway. I think a lot of the changes that you guys are making are going to help a lot. But again, please reconsider and think about the parking lot, especially across the parking lot there. I mean, it could happen anywhere else, right? It's just where you want to incentivize people to walk.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dick?
Have you done any shading studies on the various proposed heights of buildings, what, how that would work out?
We have done those and we've shared them with the city staff along the months that we've been working with them on these.
Okay. Thank you.
Might you be able to bring this next time?
Yes, we'll have to update them for this sort of revised footprint plan that we have because it has changed over the months. So we'll update that.
Understood. Commissioner Dick, did that conclude your question?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Blackwell?
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you for your in-depth presentation. I just had a quick question. I may have missed it as you were going through quickly. What neighborhood or community organizations are you working with? And are you working with them continuously? Or would you work with them in the beginning vision? Will you continue to work with them during the changes? And also, can you explain to me again why that such a high height on the buildings? And also, well, I'll leave it there for now. Thank you.
Sure. So, so we've been working for over two years with the Larimer Consensus Group and the Village Collaborative. Because the site is, well, in Larimer, part of it, part of it, the new expansions in East Liberty. But because they tie together, we've been working with both of them. And in fact, they're both signatories to the CBA. We are in regular meetings with them. And by regular, I mean, you know, almost on a monthly basis where we discuss all sorts of aspects with them of things that are happening. They're very supportive of this. As part of this process too, of meetings over the past two-plus years, we did also engage with ELDI, East Liberty Housing, the Kingsley Association, and put together what was called at the time KEAL Plus. So it was really a collection of all the community groups that were tied. So it was really a collection of all the community groups that were touched by this. Um, and the CBA expressly requires um, us to meet with the organizations. And also to help fund their staffing and their efforts so that we can be totally collaborative in how we work through this. So it is, you know, as I joked last time, they're stuck with us and it's been a very good and positive relationship. And um, you, you know, Todd and Greg always say they're generational owners, they're not going anywhere. Um, and from that standpoint, um, you know, there's going to continue to be the collaboration all the way through. On, on the height side, just going back to the question that, that we had said before. Again, we don't believe any of these buildings or all of these buildings will be at this max height, but we wanted the flexibility to be able to do it. And I think you'll see in the information we provide, that it just gives us optionality.
Uh, Commissioner Blackwell, does that cover? Uh, it sounded like you might have had a third question there, but does that cover?
Yeah, that does. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Wu?
Yeah, um, so back to the um, discussion about the building heights and setbacks. Especially along Penn Avenue and East Liberty. Um, i- i- if there is, you know, there, if there isn't a way to, to really do the setbacks to, uh, you know. A standard where there's a, a large, you know, setback. Um, then possibly there's, you know, there's other design considerations that, um, you know. You may want to look at um, in terms of like. You know, transparency along the, the ground floor, uh, make, you know, having um, you know storefronts, doors, things like that. That's um, that go out onto the streets, the sidewalks, um, street trees. Um, so yeah, I, I guess I would just urge um, you know, the, the design team to look at some of those. Um, possibilities, you know, maybe a wider sidewalk. Um, the, the, the Nabisco Building, for instance, um. At Penn Avenue right now, that, that sidewalk is pretty narrow, um, and there's kind of like a big, big wall there. So you know, i- if, if there can be an improvement on, on that situation with, you know, some of the new buildings. Even if there isn't uh, you know. Um, big step backs, you know, that's something that uh, I think uh, would be a, a good consideration to look at.
Yeah, and we do have in our design guidelines on, on fifty-two, we do talk about, you know. No less than sixty percent transparency and, and, and those types of items. And I do think that again, we're, we're at the PLDP stage, but as we come through on the FLDP. Uh, for each of these, that there'll be a, a ton of time for back and forth in discussion about. How we build that public realm out in that environment, so that it's comfortable for, for everybody.
Does that conclude your question? And commissioners, are there um, additional comments or some questions here? Commissioner, Commissioner.
Yeah, I have a few, and I think it's mostly cleanup. Um, just looking at the text and the PLDP. Could you tell us about some of the changes that were made for Sub District A and Sub District B?
Uh, yeah, I don't know that there were, I don't know that there were changes except for the diagrams, Rachel.
So there are some changes to the language. There are additions, running just a quick red line. So if you could be prepared to speak to those, it does look like there was some additional language probably going to be built to line. And obviously you had to change the description of the district, which I understand. And then there was also some additional language related to the traffic and parking demand analysis.
I think that that was in the, I think the traffic and parking demand analysis was in the original one.
Okay, well, uh, if you could speak to those, I, I just ran a red line of what was on, is on the website currently versus what is on the website now. Or I'm sorry, what is in Muni Code versus what is posted on the.
So I apologize. So there have been changes of the PLDP since we started this.
And those aren't reflected in?
They should be reflected i- in the latest submission, but I can look through, I can look through those and make sure. Basically, what we decided to do on, and when we submitted our traffic demand analysis was essentially. Because we don't know what's going to be built yet, we essentially established similar to what's been done in other places like Hazelwood Green. And overall number of trips that can be generated by the site based on existing infrastructure. And then what trips can be done based on, you know, minor tweaks that happen afterward. And as this phasing comes up, we're going to do a traffic study on each phase to say. Here's the overall pie that's been allotted for trips. Here's how we go ahead and take that piece of the pie. Here's what's remaining. So I think when we originally submitted the PLDP, we contemplated doing the traffic study on a phase by phase basis. What the staff came back and asked us to do was to do this overall study of the site for sort of like a. You know, maximum demand at different levers. So that's what we've done. And then we're still going to come through on a phase by phase.
That's helpful to know. I'll take a closer look, but um, thank you. And then in terms of the parking, uh, piggybacking on what Commissioner Cantonia said about kind of location and insulating it a little bit. I combed through, but I can't say I memorized all of your design guidelines. Um, I don't know if there's anything in there about placing it to the rear of a building or not by the primary entrance. Um, something that would make that area more engaged instead of you shut of the parking that is there now. Uh, something like that would probably be helpful to address his comment. Uh. Or alternates, alternate design guidelines. I'm just gonna go through. Based on the order of your slides. Could we get on to the slide regarding uh, the signage, please? I think it's. I think it's five. So I understand, just looking at the bullet points. Um, you know, comparing this to some of the other provisions in the code, this is pretty expansive. You're proposing, you know, above eighty square feet. A maximum of four square feet for a linear square foot of the building and with a maximum length of three twenty-five. Uh, which could be a significant sign, um, but not necessarily inconsistent with some of our other, other provisions. But I think what is most concerning to me is the permission to have additional tenant signs without any limitation. So from what, the way I'm reading it strictly is that there could be additional uh, two square feet of signage. Per linear signage, um, I'm sorry, per linear foot. For each tenant, provided the sign is in front of the tenant's face. So if we're looking at one of your, you know, a twelve-story building and you have five tenants. That could be a significant amount of signage on the side of the building.
I think we should add a cap on that to, to, man, I don't think that was the intent.
I don't think so either. Like to understand how that caps. Um, because you do have it for the, the building, business name, you know, maximum four. Um, per building, it's not quite the same for the tenant. Um, so we'd like to see some of that. Uh, just reiterating what we heard before, um, the big site, so I know that. There's some resistance to screen some of the sods on the secondary frontages and provide those step backs. But that's something I'm going to be looking for and recommending. Uh, you know, in existing very squared, it's a big site. Those are, you know, even though it's not Penn Avenue, it's a main drag that people are walking on. Um, so we'd really like to see some of that, or at least, you know, some specificity with proposed internal road A or proposed internal road B. Um, you know, maybe it's not every site, every road internal of the site, maybe it's A, B, some combination. Specific to those that is lesser. See. I think it was really helpful with the um, I thank you again for the mathing. That was really helpful to understand. And just I'll take a closer look at those design guidelines. Um, but I think that does a lot to address it. Sure. Sorry, I'm looking at your red line. Not a short document. Uh, and then I haven't looked too closely at the affordable housing provisions. I know you said that you went over those with the mayor's office. Have they signed off on this specific language?
Not yet.
Okay, um, just because I'm interested in this, just flagging that some of these provisions are related to a single building. So you know, if you have twenty bill, twenty units or less in a single building, then these provisions wouldn't apply. I do have concerns that they're tied to some of that funding, which isn't language we normally see.
Right.
Um, specifically, you know, I, I don't want somebody to be able to back out of it because the URA or the Housing Authority aren't providing funds. That's something we look to develop.
Well, let me just be super clear about how that got to where it was, so there's no question mark. Um, the, the CBA that we negotiated for two years requires. A, a commitment to significant off-site affordable or sale housing. Um, that number um, of, of contribution that's made is essentially seeded at six million dollars by Walnut. And it creates the establishment of a basically a twenty-five million dollar revolving fund to go ahead and build off-site for sale. Housing. Um, and it's just to be clear that the housing we're talking about off-site is. In line with the Laramore Community Plan, which is essentially a third. That is what we call fifty percent, a third that is called workforce eighty, the one-twenty, and a third that is market. That is what their community plan wants to have, and that's what we're generating as part of this project. To go ahead and to build in line with that plan. The second piece of that was that we, what we had negotiated in the CBA is that there would be five percent onsite. That was affordable. So if you look at the actual blend of what this development is provided in terms of. Overall affordability, that number's like seventeen, seventeen to twenty percent when you look at dollars spent and net result. But the mayor's office came back to us with, was said, we want you to have fifteen percent onsite affordable. What we said to them is there is no way that that works on an economic standpoint. You might as well kill the project because we're already committing the dollars that we would ordinarily spend. And this doesn't take into account high construction costs, high borrowings. You know, all of the things that you have, none of that takes into account. There's not an extra ten percent that's available to do onsite. We're not opposed to it, but the pro forma doesn't work. If you're going to ask for that prohibition that you've put on there, you're going to have this strip mall for the next forty years. Just, you know, straight out. So what we worked through over a series of meetings with them, the URA, et cetera, is a path. To be able to get us to get the ten percent onsite in addition to the five percent to make that happen. So this is a, I agree that this is a unique situation, but without those participation in the voucher program. And without the subsidy that we have been um, told that, you know, should be available to us, we cannot do the ten percent. So that's why it's different from everything else that, that's been seen. Because we made a commitment to the community groups that we would honor what was in the CBA. And that is very important. And again, that's two years worth of work. Um, they do not want us to throw out the CBA. We do not want to throw out the CBA. But we said that for the project to be viable, this is the path to get the extra ten percent onsite. That's why it's written in such a way that if it doesn't come through, we're still doing the five percent, because that was our original promise.
And that five percent, that's at the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, AMI?
Yes.
And so reading those together. The twenty-five million offsite, just so I'm understanding, is it unlocked as housing is filled onsite? Or does that happen upfront?
So the way that it's envisioned under the CBA is that. With each phase, there is money that is contributed. So it's just like a line item in the budget, right? So it's based on the overall percentage of what that is versus what we think the overall density of the site is. That money comes right out as, as, you know, the closing, so to speak. Um, and that goes um, you know, as, as it goes to phase by phase. Because the other thing that, that is envisioned by this is um, the community groups and URA. Are going to be actually the ones developing the housing, uh, with qualified contractors and, and developers that they choose. We're just a funding mechanism for it. So that money comes over and there's just not going to be the bandwidth to do it all at once. So it makes sense for us to put the money in as the project develops and then have it develop after that.
And so it's, as part of that, when you say each phase, it doesn't necessarily require a phase to have residential in it. It's just any development of.
Any development, any development. If, if we build an office building there, there's still a contribution.
That's helpful. Um, and then I think similarly, if you could explain to me, I, because I know it's very nuanced language with that in the CBA. Um, you know, the duration of the affordability commitment is the earlier of twenty years. Or the expiration of the term granted by the application for vouchers.
So.
How long is that term typically and how does that work?
So my understanding is that it's typically ten years, but can be twenty, but can be no longer than twenty. But you can apply for an extension once you're in the program to have it extended out. So that's why it's, it's written that way. From our standpoint, again, going back to the economics that we're dealing with, we have to be able to match. The money coming in on it with the ability to go ahead and make the project viable. So that's why we've tied it to the actual term of the commitment that's made by the Housing Authority on the Maljuk.
And I do see, you know, you agree to take, I'm sorry, Walnut agrees to take commercially reasonable stuff to renew. Understanding that that is addressing the onsite. Is there a similar timeframe for the offsite? Is that out of your control as part of?
So that's all controlled by the CBA and, and, and that, that requires, you know, regular meetings. It requires regular funding. And again, our, our role on that is the conduit to the money. The, the community groups and URA are the ones who are running that, that process.
Kind of what I was understanding. Give me one second. I don't think I have any more comments, but again, big document. Think that addresses all of my comments today. Thank you.
Okay, um, commissioners, if there are no additional comments or questions um, at this time, we'll have the applicant close. All right, it looks like you're done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This has been a good process, being able to do it in parts and, and ask for uh, what we moved. So have a good rest of your day. We'll move on to the next agenda. Okay, we're going to move on to briefing agenda item B, which is as follows. DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three nine nine. This is an amendment to the preliminary land development plan for specially planned District Ten, Hazelwood Green. To permit type E development to amend signage and wayfinding section and other miscellaneous amendments. In the Hazelwood neighborhood. Presenting this is uh, Mr. Cancelia.
And sorry, before you go, I'm gonna. Yeah, just. You can start. No, I have a way to communicate with her.
Thank you, commissioners. Yes, so this is DCP MPZC dash zero zero three nine nine. Which is filed by Tiddy Inspire on behalf of Almono LP. Uh, which is the property owner for the SP District, um, to make amendments to the preliminary land development plan. Um, so this few amendments can really be um, essentially the three sets of amendments. So the first set uh, being the amendments to create this type E development category and associated standards. Uh, the miscellaneous amendments that are applicable to the entire SP District. And amendments which uh, supplement the existing signage regulations of the PLDP. Um, so the type E development, uh, which I'll let the applicant, uh, I'll probably brief um, overview of. And then let the applicant get details, but essentially it's uh, a, an addition to the four types of development that are permitted. In the existing PLDP, uh, and this is intended to permit structures which are associated with outdoor sports, recreation. And similar uh, spectator events as the primary use. Uh, so these are structures such as bleachers, uh, you know, concessions, uh, restrooms, scoreboards, similar types of those types of structures. Uh, and then the applicant has proposed a series of requirements that are very specific to this type of development. Which I'll, uh, the applicant uh, discuss in his presentation. Um, the second set of amendments. Um, the second set of amendments uh, relates to there are several miscellaneous amendments uh, which have come up as a part of as the site has started to develop out. The applicant is proposing several amendments to these, one of which being uh, the amendment to section four point two, which is the build-two zone and frontage requirements, um, which to essentially allow a boundary structure such as fences or walls to count rather than just simply the building uh, to be counted towards these build-two zone requirements. Um, other amendments are um, to reduce some conflicting language in four point two point two. Um, amendments to four point three point one uh, to exclude things such as parking entrances, loading docks uh, from these ground floor transparency requirements. Um, separate amendment dealing with um, mechanical penthouse uh, equipment and whether or not uh, allowing those to not have to meet sort of fenestration requirements at the the top story. Um, and then a clarification that on parcel parking does not, isn't required to be shared parking. Uh, and then finally, the third uh, set of amendments deals with the signage regulations. Um, a lot of these requirements are similar to different types of signage regulations um, that we see in other zones in the city, but I'll let the applicant describe those details. Um, three to point out uh, that are kind of unique to this uh, S P District are the portal branding signs, which um, essentially are to identify major entrances to the S P District. Um, the venue uh, scoreboard plus video board, which is, you know, your typical scoreboard associated with um, the type E development. Uh, and then finally sponsorship sponsorship signage, which is intended to recognize donors and contribute contributors to to the the site itself. Um, so there was a development activities meeting held by the applicant uh, with the registered community organization uh, in Hazelwood on June eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Um, there's a memo um, summarizing that meeting in your briefing report. Um, there's the Hazelwood uh, neighborhood plan and a compliance letter with the plan will be attached as a part of the hearing in action. Um, we are, so there is a scheduled hearing of the planning commission for July twenty-third um, that um, for this project, uh, D C P staff's recommendation is that the High Commission only takes uh, action on the set of amendments related to the type E development. And then we, you know, we've reached out to the applicant last week uh, to notify them about this and to so that we can work on having additional time to work on the additional amendments related to those miscellaneous amendments as well as the signage uh, requirements. Um, you know, there are still some outstanding um, items that we are working with the applicant. Uh, we have scheduled meetings with them next week to kind of work work out some of these issues. Um, and the applicant team, there's been a decent amount of back and forths leading up to this meeting about some of these amendments. Um, so the the overarching thing that we are looking, that D C P staff is looking at is if some of these amendments, particularly related to the type E development, as well as the changes to the build-two zone requirement, is to kind of maintain the intent of the P L D P, uh, which requires, you know, large, you know, heavy build in frontages and other types to enhance the public realm. Um, to really, you know, if these amendments are to approve one of the standards to ensure that, you know, an active public realm is maintained as as a part of these amendments. Um, and then just, you know, there's additional items um, related to some of the signage types, you know, looking at additional requirements around the portal branding uh, signs to prevent any confusion with what is typically a neighborhood gateway sign. Um, sponsorship signage is also something that uh, we are continuing to work with applicant on. Um, and then additional uh, regulations such as additional screening to ensure in the event to prevent any type of, you know, spill over lighting effect from this signage type outside of the S P District. Um, and these are items that we are continuing to work with the applicant on. So um, you know, prior to making a recommend recommendation to counts uh, the commission, we continue to work with the applicant on this. Um, and then finally, just, you know, the the criteria to review preliminary land development plans has specific criteria that um, the applicant will need to provide as a part of justification for these amendments. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team.
Okay, so good afternoon again. John came in here for Tishman Spire and Hazelwood Greens. With me is Bill Colano, as you all probably know, signage expert extraordinaire. Um, first of all, I do want to thank staff for being terrific and working through with us. You know, this is a massive P L D P and a massive project and um, you know, it sat pretty much dormant for a while. Um, now that things are starting to happen onsite, we're learning. Uh, and I think we're all learning together that some of the things that may have existed, you know, ten years ago when it came in are either impractical or or don't work for them. So we're just trying to figure out ways to make things work so that there is, you know, clarity. Um, and that's what a lot of these cleanup items are along the way. So I'll walk through those. I mean, our hope is is um, you just heard, we have meetings coming up this week. Our hope is we can work through some issues and be ready um, for two weeks. If we're not, it's okay. Um, but our goal is to just continue to work collaboratively. I feel like we got a lot of this solved, but um, let me walk through them. So the first is the miscellaneous revisions. Excuse me. So you want to go next slide, please? Uh, can go to the next slide? Oh, there's, there we go. Perfect. So one of the things is is the revisions to the build-two zone. What we found is that um, and these are two examples of two projects that I have actually were before you. One was the Bioforge and one was the Robotics Innovation Center. Um, when the P L D P was really uh, thought thought about, there wasn't the thought of sort of this open yard concept um, or also how you would have, you know, essentially some of this interplay with the street. And we don't believe all of it needs to be enclosed. Um, you know, Carnegie Mellon's was a good example. They wanted that outdoor space to be able to test their equipment and and also wanted it to be in such a way that, you know, people could look and see what was going on on it, right? It doesn't all have to be in an enclosed building, right? It seemed wasteful, you know, it seems like a nice way to interact with the environment and the community to be able to have people see the activeness that's happening. So basically, what we wanted to do, and the language is in there now, but this is just a clarification, that boundary structures are are included in the calculations of build-two zone. We think it gives opportunity, not just for this reaction between the public and seeing what's happening inside, but it, we think it's also a very good public art opportunity. We think it's a robust opportunity for community engagement to be able to have these structures along there, but have them be in such a way that it interacts as opposed to sort of a monolithic building type item. Um, so that's why we've had the requirements is high-quality design materials and incorporation of public artwork. And again, this is just about putting in the P L D P. Everything's going to be coming forward. There's no project now. Everything would be coming forward for C D A F and to you guys to be sure that that those requirements were met. But we wanted to at least have some flexibility so that as different types of development come, um, and you'll see it as we get to the type E structures, that we have the ability to not just um, to have some creativity, I guess. Um, next slide, please. This is just to clean up. Um, it was uh, just an exclusion on the calculation that parking, excuse me, entrances and exits don't count towards the ground floor transparency. Um, there are some questions that we had from different users and safety, security, those types of items. Um, and they wanted to make sure that, you know, if there's a garage door, we don't have to worry about that being transparent. Um, next slide, please. This is again, just to clean up on up upper floor transparency. Um, this, this is actually a cutaway again from the Bioforge. It's not visible at all from the street and it's really screening mechanicals and others. Um, so we wanted to make sure that, you know, we didn't have to deal with those penthouses and those other items having transparency and other items uh, in it and that that calcu- those pieces aren't included in essentially the calculation. So again, just, I think, more cleanup than anything else. Next slide, please. So this is a little bit of an issue that we ran into and again, a cleanup. Um, you know, on parcel parking limited to twenty percent of a park or four tenths of an acre, and it doesn't have to be shared parking. Um, I think we've been thinking about, you know, some of our residential use that we're looking to have there and some other uses. And I think some of that needs to be dedicated to that particular user. So we just wanted to clarify essentially that there can be some dedicated parking to a certain user. We wanted to make sure that if we had tenants in the building, so to speak, they didn't have to worry about coming and not having spaces. Um, next slide, please. So this is a a uh, a couple excerpts of Second Avenue. Um, we wanted to show you what the existing conditions are, as you can see, they're not great. Um, we are thinking about putting some garages along Second Avenue. And one of the things that we thought about was how how do you make this work in such a way that it's attractive on the public realm, but it's not going to make it, you know, essentially unfeasible to do? So one of the things that we wanted to do was add the ability to put in in place like a landscape buffer uh, along the garage uh, as opposed to, you know, just screening. Um, because we think that ultimately our goal for second as it grows up, and there are two pieces to second. There's this part of second and then, which is the second slide. And then there's the first slide, which is what we call old second, which is really, I mean, bad. Um, so our thought long-term there is that there could be, you know, walkways, public, public realm, good pedestrian access, and the thought is if we could landscape that and have it feel like somebody would feel good walking there um, or biking through there or doing those things, that that would really be a win for us. So the, that's what we're talking about on second. And then next slide. I'll turn it over to the king of signage.
Thank you. Uh, when we started this project, we looked at the original P L D P and it gave very uh, aspirational goals for the signage and uh, states specifically that we would come back at a later time in order to uh, present more specific guidelines as the project evolved. And so that's what we have done to date. Um, we are special district um, ten, and so there are nine S P districts that came before us. We started by taking a look at the most liberal um, allowances in those districts. Uh, we put them together and reviewed them with the developers, thinking that this would give us maximum creativity in signage. And the result was, uh, I think we want the exact opposite of this. And the, if we take the most conservative parts of all of this, uh, that's going to give us something that is much more reflective of the uh, Hazelwood neighborhood. And so uh, the resulting nine sign types that I'm going to show you uh, meet kind of minimum requirements for what we think um, are necessary to sign the district. And uh, we presented this to the Hazelwood community and we actually got applause at the end of the signage presentation, which is a a whole new experience for me. Uh, let's go to the next slide, please. So these nine uh, sign types are, first of all, gateway signs. And so those are signs that will be around the perimeter of the uh, Hazelwood neighborhood. Uh, they're relatively modest, eighty square feet in size, and they're not taller than twenty-five feet tall. We then have the second type of signage for districts. And that's similar to what you find in Southside Works with the I beams that occur periodically within the perimeter or the cultural district banners that um, line the streets and uh, remind you where you are. And there are different um, sub-districts within this whole development. And so uh, these interior district branding signs will help differentiate and give them their own personality. We have uh, commercial signs, eighty square feet. This matches city code. Um, and uh, then let's go onto the next slide, please. We have inclusion of high wall signs. This matches the two percent of size that is within the city code. Uh, when we look at all of the outdoor spaces that we have, uh, we defer to the sign system that we designed for city open spaces. And uh, it's a modular system and that's going to work uh, terrifically uh, for all of the outdoor spaces we have to sign within Hazelwood. Electronic signs are specific to the type E site and the type E is for that uh, stadium gathering place. The city code is for twelve hundred square feet maximum. We're at a thousand square feet maximum. We did some calculations for viewing and we don't need anything more than that. Next slide, please. Our last three. Uh, we have a need for sponsorship signs. We're limiting the size to seventy-two square feet. They have to be under uh, forty-five uh, feet. Uh, we have that signage. We anticipate uh, a very dynamic um, uh, changeable schedule of activities happening. Uh, this is actually a real sign from uh, Hazelwood. The City Theater presents the uh, Drive-In Arts Festival. And uh, the street signs, we are going to defer to uh, standard domain regulations. A couple different notes are added to the bottom. We have uh, signs with illumination or to dim at night. They'll be compliant with the city code for illumination. We have no illuminated signage within a hundred feet of the river. There will be no flashing lights, no advertising signs. We have uh, universities granted additional sign allowance. And that's for a very unique condition on the site where you're a, the, uh, one of the university buildings is a very long building with a short end. And you approach the short end. And so uh, the sign, we're giving them more signage on that short end than uh, normally they would be allowed. And uh, the approval process for high wall signs will go through the city planning commission just as uh, signs do for the rest of the city. Uh, that is my presentation.
Next slide, please. So as as I talked about when we first started, one of the things that we we discovered as we were looking through this is that um, some of the type of development that we're thinking about now wasn't really contemplated by the building types that existed in the P L D P. So um, instead of trying to, you know, fit the square peg into the proverbial round hole, we thought that it would be a good idea to create this new spectator event um, type use because, you know, bleachers, concession stands, fields. The um, first of all, they're incredibly necessary um, in terms of building out the overall urban environment that we have to have this active recreation space. Um, and it's a real community amenity. Um, so our thought was instead of trying to go ahead and and make something work that didn't work, to create a separate typology for it so that we can get something that does work. And you'll see how we've done that to make it make sense. But the goal, building our first field, the the community field that we've talked about previously. So um, the first slide shows that we're exactly, right now as it exists are four building types, A through D, and we're adding a new type E. So next slide, please. So essentially, this is what we would be looking to do. Um, next slide, please. So let's talk about the nuts and bolts of type E. Um, number one, it's for, type E is for development for sports, recreation and other similar spectator events, including bleachers, stadium seating, video boards, concessions, et cetera. So that limits this to, again, very specific typology. Second thing that we're doing is we're limiting this to twelve acres in the site. So it's not going to pop up all overwards. It's not going to be a a new stadium for, you know, a new team or anything like that. It's it's really focused on the community-based amenity and a site-specific amenity. Um, the other thing that we did is that no project can be bigger than six acres. Um, the reason why we did that again is we think that's appropriate for the scale of what we're talking about um, in terms of. in terms of having this ability to do this. On a maximum building height, we went at eighty-five feet. You may say, why is that? We did bleachers plus a press box. So that's how we got to our eighty-five feet to be able to get that. And on accessory buildings, we went between fourteen and sixty feet high. The reason for that is we didn't see any reason to build bathrooms that are higher than fourteen feet tall. And, you know, but again, for accessory, we wanted to have some flexibility for something that if there's an observation tower or there's something else that has to happen, we wanted to have that. In terms of articulation, we're talking about articulating the facade every thirty feet. The next item is fencing can be up to ten feet tall. We've been working with architects who do stadiums across the country. That's the standard for these types of venues to have ten feet tall as a security issue, both for the people inside the venue and outside the venue. So we're limited, that's why we're going with the ten feet. And that's what's been recommended to us by, again, people who design these. We did go ahead and say no chain link fencing. We're talking about high-quality design in terms of what we're looking to do. And I think we showed on, you know, by overall standpoint, if you think of what some of the other stadiums do, that's the type of thing we would be looking to do. In terms of primary entrances, we wanted to make clear that it's accessible for public streets and ways and that they size and space appropriately for ticketing and queuing operations. What we didn't want to have is everybody just tunneling to one area. You know, if you think about PNC Park or any of these other fields, you have multiple gates. And we wanted to have multiple ways for people to get in. And particularly as we're looking to sort of community-centered activities, we want people to be able to walk, right? So we'd like to be able to have an entrance in an area that's closest to them where they can walk to the gate and come in to make that mark. So we didn't want to, traditionally in other aspects of the PLDP, you have entrances have to be in a certain corner or anything like that. We wanted flexibility to have the ability to arrange it so it makes sense for the venue. Next item was lighting. You know, look, we want to have it lit, but we're going to minimize light. We're going to shield, we're going to do all this sort of what I would call good neighbor things. If you want to turn to the next slide, please. You know, there were some questions that came up in our discussion back and forth about, you know, what am I talking about on fencing? So these were just some examples of some things that we think about that, you know, again, it's offense, but it's high quality and it sets off really what's appropriate for what's happening on the field. Type items, so we wanted to provide you with some sort of, you know, representative samples of what we're talking. That's what we had sort of high level. Again, I do want to thank staff for working with us on this. They've been great. I want to thank you guys as well for suffering through my coughing and happy to answer any questions. And thank you, Cory, for the one.
Good sign.
You're welcome. Don't want you passing out while you're here. Don't want to be responsible for that. Okay, so at this time, there is no public testimony, but this is the time for commissioners to ask questions, make comments. Are there any on this application? You don't have any? Mr. Gammie? How about commissioners online? Commissioner Dick? You were, there you go.
Just double checking, make sure that all the entrances to the community stadiums are fully accessible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments as it relates? No? Commissioner Dick, you've got your hand raised. I think you're done. Okay. All right, very good. Well, then we will see back maybe in two, depending on how the question.
Well, few and two weeks for part of it, but maybe two weeks for more of it.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good rest of your day. All right, so we're moving on to the next agenda item, which is Agenda Item C. And it is as follows. This is the zoning map amendment to rezone certain parcels along North Negley Avenue bound by Rural Street and Rippey Street from RMM, multi-unit residential moderate density and R2M, two-unit residential moderate density. RMBH, multi-unit residential, very high density Liberty neighborhood. Presenting that is Mr. Cancelia.
Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, so this is another MPCC. This is for zoning map amendment. So this is DCP-MPC DC-2023-01692, which is filed by eighty-seven on behalf of the property owner, Melons Orchard Acquisition LLC, which contains the zoning district for several parcels along North Negley Avenue bound by Rippey Street and Rural Street. The zoning on this site is a mix of RMM and R2M. And the proposal is to rezone to RMBH. And I'll let the applicant, when he starts his presentation, to show kind of where this is. And but to, for further context, so this, there is an application for development of the parcels in question as a part of the rezoning to offer the construction of a two-hundred-and-sixty-four unit multi-unit residential building that was denied by the zoning board in twenty-twenty-two, who subsequently appealed by Melons Orchard Acquisition LLC. And the applicant and the city entered into an agreement through consent order SA number twenty-three dash zero 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 twenty-eight, which was handed in on September twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three. So as a part of this rezoning, the intention is to permit multi-unit residential at a greater density than what is currently permitted. And it would also, because part of this site is zone R2, which only allows a two-unit residential, to make it so that the permitted use of the entire site is multi-unit residential. And then from there to increase the allowable density from that moderate density to the high or the very high density in the zoning code. This was an application to amend the zoning code that came from the applicant, from the owner of the subject property. The planning commission is required to act on, to either recommend approval or denial to city council on this proposed rezoning within ninety days of receipt of the completed application. This application was deemed complete on May tenth, twenty-twenty-four. So having the hearing dates in two weeks on July twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four complies with this ninety-day requirement. There was a development activities meeting, which was held with the Village Collaborative of East Liberty, which is the registered community organization in this neighborhood. And that was had on July, sorry, not July, June eleventh, twenty-twenty-four. So then per section nine twenty-two point oh five point ten, the planning commission shall review the proposed zoning map amendment according to certain criteria. Not all criteria needs to be given equal consideration by the planning commission in reaching a decision. But these criteria are generally consistency with adopted plans, welfare of the public, intent and purpose of the zoning code, compatibility with the zoning and uses and character of the neighborhood, recommendations of staff, several, several other criteria, which, you know, the applicant will provide testimony for why, essentially arguments for why this zoning should be approved based on that criteria. And with that, I'll hand it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Paul. Good afternoon, everyone. I am not John Kamen. My name is Robert Max Yonker. I'm a shareholder and chair of our Public Sector Group at BAFSC Allen. Been working with the project team for a number of years on this project and we're excited to be here today. I know I've got fifteen slides, I've got ten minutes or so. Melons Orchard Acquisition is a collection of four individuals. Brian Cook, Chris Fernandez, Chris Anderson and Eric Hester, who is joining me here. The other three are watching online. But this is a group that is passionate about affordable housing and are excited to bring this project before you today. So Regal Nag from eighty-seven is with us as well. He is our architect. I spell that last name better than I say it, but he is here to answer any other questions. As a preview, we're with these seventeen, fifteen slides as we're going through. I will let everybody know that we do not have design plans or pictures or photos for what we presented to the ZBA. That was one of my sort of questions to the planning commission. I'd like you to think about that as we go through these location pictures and slides, just because I've worked with a number of planning commissions, a solicitor and applicant. And I know sometimes they want to see what's proposed. Other times, because this is a zoning map change, it's not a text amendment zoning map change. You know, you have to understand that whatever the zoning code allows in this district could be presented by this applicant or future applicants or anything else. So I'll let you ruminate on that and hopefully give us some guidance by the end of the presentation. The other point here is we're not proposing a zoning map change and the typical nature of perhaps putting commercial in this area or an institutional or industrial use here. This is residential to residential, so we don't have those other types of considerations here. Next slide, please. If you could see on the screen, this is essentially the area that we're talking about. Our parcels that have been collected over the number of years are outlined right in the middle of this slide. You can see that we are on North Negley Avenue, just up from Penn Avenue and that connection down there. Streets are labeled. We have the East Liberty Corridor over to Laramo. Off-site, we have Highland Park, of course, and Stanton Heights, as well as Morningside. And then we get over into Friendship and Greenfield on the left. This map is a nineteen ninety-nine zoning map. I believe it was the last time it was a comprehensive rezoning of the area. I've referred to our current zoning as essentially a lightning bolt district. As you can see, we kind of jag through the neighborhood and our site is in the middle of this area right here. We can go into details about what led to this type of zoning. Eric is the residential historian and resident of East Liberty. He knows all the details of how this came to be and how it has proven, at least for this site, to not be a workable solution. Next slide, please. This is an aerial view. You can see as it comes into focus there, our site, one thing as we go through the slides, you know, we change our orientation from time to time, but our main frontage is along Negley. As you can see there, we have various dames for the shape that we have here, Tetris Peace or others. But generally, anytime we're showing this, the most frontage is on North Negley across from the former synagogue and now apartment building there as well. You can't make it out very well on this projection here, but the open space area is where the Penn Plaza building has been approved for a hundred and eight feet or so in height. We sort of sketched it out just to show that that's not just a vacant field. There's also a new development at the corner of Penn and Negley Bank, I believe. It's not shown on this picture, but this is looking into the East Liberty main corridor away from the Morningside and Stanton Heights and Highland Park direction. Next slide, please. So this is an outline of the buildings on the current site. It does not show the lot lines. We have those in later slides. But you can see that we have a collection of buildings. We have some pictures and details in the next couple of slides. But originally, this was seventy-eight units in these combined buildings. Essentially, buildings A, B and C from the left to the middle were constructed in the nineteen fifties, approximately three stories with a number of apartments for multifamily dwellings. D, E and F were older buildings from approximately the nineteen twenties, we believe. And finally, in the rear, there was an original garage carriage house that was used for parking from previous construction. The red area is accessory parking for these apartment buildings when they were in operation, as well as two lots, just to the, say the north, but it's not really the north, but just to the above of that parking lot. There was a house on that lot, but it was torn down years ago. It is currently vacant as well. As Paul mentioned, we did go in front of the zoning board of adjustment. We did have a number of variance requests, including height, density, but also a use variance. Because this is an R2M district in those three lots on that red area. And we were seeking permission to build the multifamily structure on that as well. So that is the overall view of the sites and the buildings. Next slide, please. Next three slides are photos of the current buildings as well as the surrounding buildings. We're starting at the corner of Negley and Rural in the upper left. You can see the building from approximately the nineteen twenties. We call it three stories, but you can also see that the grade of Rural Street starts to fall away from Negley. It's about a twelve-foot difference. So they have, you know, exposed basement at the rear of that property. And the street, Rural, begins to level out approximately where you see that second picture, the red house to the right. You can see from the storm sewers or so, it starts to flatten out there as well. We're talking about sort of natural dividing features for zoning districts. That's one to consider. We go around the rest of the site. You can see in the background of that third picture, the new development at the former synagogue and then another multifamily building that sits up above us, at least about a story from the sidewalk and it's approximately three stories on top of that. Next slide, please. This is moving around to the other side of the property, Rippey Street. You can see we've numbered, if you go through here, the orientation points as well as the individual buildings. But going through this site, the first building on the left is on our site. It would be proposed to be demolished. Going to J, that is not on our site, that is the Costello property. We do have an arrangement with them, though you can see that the line behind J juts a little bit out. That is why there is a partial request for rezoning for that lot. It's not the entire lot. It would be a portion of it to account for parking and other types of issues. Swinging down to the bottom, these are the completed construction across the street at the former synagogue. I believe it's called the Citadel or the Carina. It started with the C. But this was another project approved through the zoning board of adjustment for some variances. That Cupola Dome there is part of the synagogue is approximately eighty feet from the sidewalk. Gives you a sense of scale for what's directly across the street. That third picture we have there was taken from that elevation before the construction was done. So we've superimposed what you can see in the first two pictures at the bottom there. Next slide, please. As I mentioned before, we're looking from Negley, essentially with our frontage. We've reoriented this a bit, but we have added essentially the traffic patterns, the streetlights, as well as the bus stops that are along Negley at this area. Negley is an arterial roadway, formerly four lanes. Now it does have bike lanes as well. It has major bus routes for the eighty-seven for Friendship and seventy-one A for Negley. As part of the design for this building, we are proposing a transportation hub for multi-modal transportation, as well as biking area and access to take advantage of the bike lanes along Negley. But we are otherwise fully parked in the design we have. We are proposing two underground floors of parking on the site. Next slide, please. This slide here does show you the current lot lines. You can see that the first lot on the left between Rippey Street and North Negley has two structures on it, but it is one lot. The middle lot, you know, has the building in the front in sort of the I configuration, as well as that garage that I mentioned to the rear. And then the third lot, eighty-three K forty-eight, has three structures on it. And then the third lot, eighty-three K forty-eight, has three structures on it currently that are separate and completes the frontage along North Negley. Going to the back of the property, you can see the three lots that are in orange. Those are the R-two-M designation as part of their zoning district that we would include as part of our requested rezoning. On the left side, I know it's difficult to see here, we have listed the various dimensional and development standards for both the RMM, which is the majority of the site, and the R-two-M, which are the three lots in red. One other thing to note, that the residential compatibility requirements do come into play with this site and this location, both under the current zoning requirements and the proposed very high-density. Next slide, please. Once again, this is showing the various lot lines. We are not talking about just one parcel. Eventually, it is proposed to be consolidated, but right now we have seven parcels. The hitch behind the Costello Building would be the seventh, would be a new lot as part of this process. But in general, we've also listed the development standards for the requested RMVH. And as you can see, a lot of the front, rear, and exterior setbacks are the same. There is a difference. There is no specific height standard. Not in this district, but of course, it would be limited to the maximum density. We could not build, you know, sky-high in this area without running into issues with maximum density. There's no change to parking. The residential compatibility requirements, as I mentioned, stay the same. So in the grand scheme of things, as I mentioned before, this is not a rezoning in the sense of going from residential to commercial. It's going from residential to residential. So it does carry through a lot of these standards. Next slide, please. So the big difference between these three zoning districts, of course, are the density limits. Eighteen hundred square feet. Yeah, that is a very moderate density, as the name depicts. It is a more suburban type of a density, but it is what we were dealing with when we went to the zoning board of adjustment. And as they acknowledged, that was a significant change for what we were requesting. And in the zoning board of adjustment decision, which is attached to Paul's report, you can see they did suggest, you know, looking through these legislative fixes rather than spot-by-spot changes through a zoning variance process. So as we drop down to the high density, seven fifty, and then finally at four hundred for the multi-unit residential, very high density is what we would be under with this proposal. And I'm not a math person, but as you heard at the very beginning, we are proposing two hundred and sixty-four units here. We are approximately eighty-two thousand eight hundred ninety-four square feet or so. So we will need additional relief if we go through this process after the zoning change occurs. With those two hundred and sixty-four units, we initially proposed to have twenty percent of those units to be affordable at the standard level, not the eighty to one-twenty, as mentioned previously, but at the fifty percent AMI. As part of that consent agreement, which is included in Paul's report, the mayor's office was insistent that we try to find more. It's not a requirement under any circumstances, even the twenty percent. So we did work hand-in-hand, and Eric can speak to the discussions with that, to pursue other funding avenues. If those do come to fruition, we are willing to go to twenty-five percent of the two hundred and sixty-four dwelling units. And it is still a viable project economically. Next slide, please. As part of that discussion with the ZBA, when we were talking about density, to sort of put it in context, we went back after the hearing and as part of our proposed findings of facts and conclusions of law, you know, looked at the area to, you know, show that the eighteen hundred square foot density was not getting things done. And, you know, the one that we were proposing was more in line with the surrounding area. So this first slide is a half-mile radius, you know, from the property site right there in the middle. And we have a table here showing that they range in terms of that square footage from a hundred and four to five hundred and three, with an average of three-eleven and a median of three-twelve. So that was information that we compiled. We don't have the information for all of these properties on how they were constructed, when they were constructed. Did they get variances? Were they non-conforming uses or things of that nature? But in terms of what they are right now, in terms of occupancy permits and square footage on the assessment maps, we were able to make these calculations. Next slide, please. This is just pulling in a little closer to the site in the immediate vicinity. We have three locks that we were looking at on the, we'll call it the right-hand side of Negley. And there we had a range from two-twenty-one to five forty-four with an average of four oh six and a medium of four twenty-nine. And as you can see, this is a mix of the RMM zoning district and the R-two-M zoning district as well, as shown on this slide. Once again, just context for the level of density that already exists in the neighborhood, regardless of what the zoning ordinance says. Next slide, please. And finally, we had looked as part of that process to other five or more-story buildings that were over a hundred units in the immediate vicinity. These are clustered around the main Center Avenue Corridor, as you can see here. And so we have those standards or actually calculations shown in this table. Our final slide, we can move to that one. Shows our proposed area for the zoning change. There is still, you know, it's from the RMM zoning district, you know, just, we'll call it south of our building, a two, essentially lot district on both sides of Negley. And then further above our site, a larger remaining provision for a RMM district. The R-two-M district just loses that little sliver, as we talked about before. But this would be our proposal for our RMVH district. And as you can see, just looking around here, there are similarly sized zoning districts. There's an R-one-H-one up about right by the East Liberty sign. And just under the East Liberty sign, there's an H and R-one-DH in the middle Garfield there. And if we did pull the slide out a little bit more, the closest RMVH is that district right at the end of the friendship arrow. You can see it coming into the screen right now. So perhaps for the public hearing, we might pull this slide out a little bit more to show that we do have similar RMVH districts there. And going through the zoning change criteria is listed in the staff report and under section nine-two-two-point-oh-five dot F. We do believe we are in compliance with the plans of the city, as well as the policies, particularly with respect to affordable housing, as well as a diversity of housing sources. As Buddy read the newspaper in the last day or so, the Harvard study that came out noted that Pennsylvania or Pittsburgh is behind on national averages for larger-scale multifamily housing. And that is part of the affordable housing issue. So we do believe that that is the policy of the city as reflected in the consent order, as well as other actions taken by the city. Intent and purpose of the zoning code, we do have this variety of different types of zoning districts. Do believe this, you know, shows some difference. It is a nice change from the go-commercial corridor in East Liberty as we get further back to the single-family residence as part of a bit of a transition for a larger-scale multifamily, well. In terms of the extent the approval proposed zoning map amendment will detrimentally affect nearby property. As I mentioned before, this is residential to residential. Eric has, you know, worn his shoes dry over the last several years to go around, meet with the neighbor who's just around the site in general, but also at community meetings. We acquired this property starting in two thousand nineteen. It's been vacant since then. So it's about five years or so, which is another requirement in the zoning code. And through that time, the plans have changed and have, you know, become receptive to the community input. The current plan does shift the height to Negley through comments from the residents. We do have adequate parking on site. We know we're not going to make everybody happy. We know we're not going to get a line of people coming in and say, yes, make a change to this zoning district, but we have been open to that process. And if the planning commission would care, we can include a slide going through all of the dates and all of the meetings and even showing the changes and the evolution of the plan as we get to here today. But as I mentioned before, we still have miles to go before we're breaking ground. This zoning change is one part of it. Not sure what might happen in terms of changes to design as we go through and back to the zoning board of adjustment, come back to this body as we move forward and have to deal with building codes and everything else that goes along with the development of this scale. But we do believe we meet the requirements set forth in the zoning code for consideration of a zoning map change. Welcome your comments as we prepare to come back in two weeks for the public hearing.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. At this time, we don't take any public testimony. But commissioners, this is our time to ask questions or raise any concerns. Are there questions or comments at this time? And it looks like Commissioner Wu. Yes.
Yeah, so just for a little background on this. Are there any changes, like from your, from your application based on what was submitted to the ZBA versus what is proposed here for rezoning? Then also, can you explain a bit about the process of, you know, the consent decree and how that came about?
Certainly, I can address the second question first. We did go forward to the ZBA with a number of variances, as I mentioned, even a use variance for that corner. We put on our best case in terms of hardships. We were denied. We're given the direction, you know, to seek legislative changes. So we did appeal. We provided notice to everybody that appeared as an objector at the zoning board of adjustment hearing. Nobody else intervened in the case. And so as part of that process, you know, to determine a path forward, we did enter into a consent agreement that, you know, addressed this proposed rezoning going through this process. Nothing saying it's going to be granted or anything along that, giving us some options to consider a special purpose district or this very high-density designation. And then moving forward with additional affordable housing in cooperation with the city in terms of working with URA and exploring some other options to get to that idealized twenty-five percent. So that was signed by the parties, entered with the court and is documented. It's a public record. It is there. We did not have any opposition from the organized community groups, so there were no intervenors in that sense. So there's not a benefits agreement or other considerations that came into play with the consent order. In terms of changes, Craig, I'm not sure if you want to.
Yeah, in terms of the design, we really haven't revisited it since we tabled it after the files of variances. So it's essentially been shell-blowing work through this process. There's the intent to kind of go back to what we had to work through with the community and the design development up to that point. We visited, according to what comes out of these hearings and the ongoing dialogue with the city. Consider making some, some changes to address any concerns. Or as Max had noted earlier, we can also show some images when it comes to the public hearing and show you what we had intended as part of the initial application, which is still in line with, you know, the intent of the approach to the design in terms of how it meets the street, how it scales and masses the building and the broad strokes. We're happy to show a portion of that if it's helpful.
Thank you.
Does that conclude your questions, Commissioner Wu?
Yes.
All right. It looks like Commissioner Ruiz.
Thank you. My question is regarding the, the, um, the twenty-five percent of the affordable units that you're talking about. What will those consist of? Will they be one, like one-bedroom? Like what, what is that going to look like?
Is that Eric?
Sure. So the affordable units will largely follow the unit mix of a larger building itself. It is worth noting that the building is heavy on ones and studios, but that's also just a trend in the market. So we anticipate a lot of these units following that same line.
That concludes your question?
Is, so is it going to be twenty-five percent of the total demographics? Well, like, I just want to be clear what you're saying. Are you mirroring these twenty-five percent to go off of the total amount of units? So it's not like the affordable housing is just going to be the studios or, I mean.
No, it'll be, it'll be proportional.
Okay. Commissioner Dick.
Just a little more wishful thinking here on my part. Have you entertained any other proposals from the city or otherwise that might, that may indeed extend, increase the percentage of affordable housing in this project?
We did. That's how we went from twenty to twenty-five.
I'd like to see.
I think everybody would, but right now that is the standard twenty-five is what is built into this. The extra five percent is contingent on some funding. Eric can also speak to that if there are further questions.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Dick? Okay, very good. Any additional questions, commissioners?
No additional question.
Oh, go ahead, Dick.
I don't have an additional question, but I have a comment. I do think maybe showing some of the imagery of like what could be proposed on that site would be helpful, just to kind of get an understanding of like what the intent is. But also, I think, kind of having a slide that outlines that community, like engagement that went into, like, so we can understand, like, who is, who bought into this and who's benefiting from this process.
Very good.
Great. I want to echo that. Personally, I think it makes sense to kind of extend this district, but people always want to know, you know, what's going to go there. So if we could see your, as Commissioner Gammie mentioned, if we can see your current plans, then it's also helpful to know what community engagement you've had. Understanding that you haven't dusted off those plans pending this rezoning, are you anticipating the same number of variances but for the use variance?
So it would be a few setback variances, since the setbacks don't change with the overlay change. We'd be asking for them there. Barely, I don't know, maybe eight feet here or there. And there would be no height variance. This is the reason of the height requirement. And there, if we were two hundred and sixty-four units, it would be a density variance required.
And just more for the public's information than you all, because I'm sure you're very aware. Switching from the R-two, it's kind of a shuffle of requirements. So for example, the minimum setback goes from thirty to twenty-five. Rear goes from thirty to twenty-five. Exterior goes from thirty to twenty-five. But interior setbacks go from five to ten, so they increase. And then, as you mentioned, the maximum height goes from forty feet, three stories, to fifty-five feet, four stories. So it is a relatively minor adjustment. Looking quickly at the, at the zoning board decision, you were proposing up to seventy feet initially. Is that correct?
Um, yes.
And now you would be closer to that fifty-five, is what you're saying?
Well, with the, with the overlay change, the actual height requirement becomes technically unlimited, although this. becomes technically unlimited, although as Max noted, it would be because it, we're suggesting that it all change to RM.
Oh, because.
R two lots would become RM as well. So there is a district change for those R two lots and then everything changes to the VH designation. However, as Max noted, we'd still be looking at the same number of floors because we'd be limited by the density use. A way to build higher based on the density requirements, even with the variance we do it for.
Okay. Can you explain that to me? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the Otter density table and it said the RM sub-district is limited to fifty-five feet, not to exceed four stories. And I understand the point there would be, and I, I, I'm in light, so I think I.
No, because they're going to the BH, the very height.
Oh, very.
There's, there's no height requirement.
I'm sorry, I missed reading that. Okay, so all right, all right. Okay, that makes a lot more sense. Thank you. I'm going to retract everything I read about that table. That is very helpful to know. But in any event, you are anticipating that this design, not only would we see it at the hearing for a request, but there would be another visit to the zoning board and continued community engagement, correct?
Yes.
I don't have any other questions. I thought I was being super helpful. I'm sorry.
You were super helpful. All right. If there are no other questions, commissioners or comments at this time, we'll let the applicant go. Thank you for your presentation and we'll see you back. I can interrupt the rest of your day.
There was just, there was some soft soils.
You still have one more agenda item under briefing. So if we can move forward, I'd like to go ahead and read that in. And that is briefing agenda item D. This is Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash zero five two five and DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four eight two. This is zoning map amendment referred to the planning commission by the city council to rezone certain parcels generally bound by Hamilton Avenue, Dunfermline Street, Tioga Street, Cinnabar Way and Zenith Way from R one AVH, single family unit attached residential, very high density to LNC, local neighborhood commercial in the Homewood South neighborhood. Presenting that here this afternoon is Mr. Councilier.
Thank you, commissioners. I'm talking to you again. So yes, this is, so Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash zero five two five was introduced at City Council by Councilman Card Mosley on May twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. This got referred to the planning commission on June seventh, twenty twenty-four for the commission's report and recommendation. So you have attached to your briefing report a copy of that legislative text. And part of this, the application number for the fine commission for this legislation is DCP dash MPZC dash twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four eight two. Again, these are several parcels generally along Hamilton Avenue on Dunfermline Street in the Homewood South neighborhood. They're currently zoned R one AVH, which is single unit attached residential, very high density, and the proposal is to go from that zoning to LNC, which is local neighborhood commercial. So essentially what would allow, what this rezoning would allow is, you know, rather than just a strictly resident, single family residential to allow for several different types of commercial mixed-use development in the local that's permitted in the local neighborhood commercial zoning districts. There's been no application for development that has been submitted to the Department of City Planning. The applicant may want to describe potential uses that could come from this rezoning, but so far no actual development application has been submitted. So per section nine twenty-two point oh five point B, point two, you know, the, an amendment to the boundaries of the zoning map can be proposed by City Council, Planning Commission, or the owner of the subject property. In this case, as compared to the previous case, this was proposed by City Councils. So the City Council or the Planning Commission under nine twenty-two point oh five D is required to act to either recommend approval or denial of the zone change, the zone change application with the ninety days of receipt. Again, this was received on June seventh. So the hearing date, which is scheduled for July twenty-third, complies with that ninety-day requirement. There was a development activities meeting, which was held with the Homewood Community Development Corporation. Apologies, I need to correct the date, but the date is in the copy of the report. And so for the, the hearing action, I'll correct that date because it was an earlier date, but still complies with the DAM requirement. And then, and you'll ask for the code requirements for noticing all property owners within one hundred and fifty feet of the proposed zoning change received a notice mailing. And then posted notices were placed around the boundaries of the, where the proposed rezoning is staying in place. Again, the, the development criteria, the criteria that the planning commission faces their recommendation on with regards to zoning map amendment was read in the prior hearing, you know, generally consistency with adaptive plans, means a wall to the public, intent and purpose of the zoning code, recommendations of staff. Like the time the subject property is vacant, among, among others. And so with that, I'll let the applicant team present their application.
Thank, thank you. I'm going to just start off kind of with a brief, about thirty thousand foot view and hand it over to Rebecca to give the full technical presentation. I do also want to thank the staff at the Department of City Planning for their guidance throughout this process. You know, simply put, the rezoning amendment and proposal, I think really brings the parcel that we're discussing today in line with the other parcels that are in proximity of this site. And we'll be moving from, as Paul said, high-density residential to local neighborhood commercial, which is literally right across the street and it actually is contiguous, you know, with the parcel and also contiguous a little bit further down the street is the urban neighborhood commercial. So this is no, you know, radical shift in the general zoning of the proximity of the properties that we're talking about along Hamilton Avenue going toward Homewood Avenue. I believe that the zoning change would create a contiguous commercial corridor that would encourage business development as well as walkability and multimodal movement throughout Homewood as well as adaptive reuse of existing buildings and would connect residents to the neighborhood's growing commercial core along a safe walkable revitalized streetscape. And I do believe that, you know, this, you know, project, you know, in particular, I think is going to be an important catalyst. You know, as we look at the transformational revitalization of the whole Homewood community. So I was proud to get guidance from, from planning and then get a support from my fellow Collins Law Council and work with Run the Block LLC in, in moving this forward. And now I'll hand it over to Rebecca to give the technical presentation.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley. Hi, my name is Rebecca Mizakar. I'm a landscape architect with PVE. And just to give you a little bit more of that neighborhood context and the area that we're talking about for the proposed zoning change, you could skip ahead a few slides there. So we're kind of in central Homewood along Hamilton Avenue. The area is highlighted in the dashed line. Sorry, it's a little hard to read my street labels here. Coming from plan left would be west and right would be east, north is to the top of the plan. If you're traveling along Homewood, or I'm sorry, Hamilton Avenue from the west, first you would cross North Homewood Avenue, which is that existing kind of commercial business district. So if you, if you looked to your left, traveling down the street toward the north, you would see the hardware store and PNC Bank. If you looked south, you might see the newer building with everyday cafe, the multi-story building across a few vacant lots that are owned by the URA. And then just a bit further down Hamilton Avenue, you come to Zenith Way. And that would be the western boundary of this proposed area for rezoning. Continuing along Hamilton Avenue, we'll show you in some future slides what that character looks like. But at the end of this zone, you are then at the residential district with the little two-story row houses that are, you know, very monotonous rows of row houses on both sides of Hamilton Avenue. The end of this district to the east is bounded by North Dunfermline Street. Just south of that area is Phase One Elementary, which is labeled here on the plan. And then the southern edge of this area is bounded by Cinnabar Way, which it really does function as a traditional Pittsburgh way. There are residences just to the south of this area that are facing Tioga Street and their garages and parking areas are fed from that brick Cinnabar Way. Next slide. So just then highlighting those existing commercial areas around us, the local neighborhood commercial in the heart of the community there in the pink to the north above, and then that purple zone is the UNC, a little higher density urban neighborhood commercial where we have everyday cafe. Next slide. And then the zoning map version of that showing that our subject area again is R one A, very high density. Next slide. And the idea of this is very much a contiguous with the LNC. So continuing that LNC across Hamilton Avenue. The next slide shows some of the community character. Now we've just changed our orientation a hundred and eighty degrees so that as we're looking at Hamilton Avenue, we can start to see those existing commercial façades. You can see that quite a bit of this area is either vacant land or open asphalt parking lot. And then the bubbles up above show those existing buildings and their characters. You can see a lot of those buildings are two-story, very much in line with what you would think of as local neighborhood commercial. Whether they have existing businesses like the dairy, kind of like the corner store. You can imagine a lot of like mom and pop type of uses there over the years with potential for, maybe it's residential apartments above, maybe it's warehouse or office that were supporting those first floor uses. And then on the far left of the slide, that red roof building is a former religious assembly use, former church, which I believe has been vacant for at least ten years or so. You can see the existing LNC highlighted across Hamilton Avenue. And then we included that one image of what's on the corner of Hamilton and Steric Street. Just to give you the idea of that character also, all the way down included what was probably first story mom and pop commercial development with residential above. Next slide. So back to the original proposal, just highlighting that area. So of course, this is being introduced by Councilman Mosley and as he mentioned, the impetus behind it are the owners of some of the property within this area, Andre and Robin, and their company is Run the Block. We do have a few slides that talk about their proposed development. I didn't want to get into that unless asked. So I know the focus is on the rezoning, but if you'd like to see a few slides of that concept, we're happy to share.
Please move forward.
So if you want to go ahead to the next, maybe one more slide.
I would like to see the copies of the proposed slides for what they're visiting.
Okay, so back to our original aerial, again, we have north toward the top of the slide and Hamilton Avenue is that northern border along the area proposed rezoning, which is kind of highlighted here in pink. And then the properties that are owned by Run the Block are in the dashed line. So we're at the eastern end of the proposed zone for rezoning, including the church on the corner of Hamilton and North Dunfermline. And the church, the, the previous owner, when it was a church, there were about five parcels associated with that corner that are now owned by Run the Block. And then the shape there does include another area just outside of the area for proposed rezoning, going all the way back to Tioga. They're also looking at developing that parcel as well, but it's outside of the area for rezoning. And that would be for parking to support a commercial development. So in the next slide, we have some schematic site plans. On the right is the aerial of the existing condition for this corner. And on the left, you see the proposed plan. So very schematic so far. These were put together by Des Moines Architects. After this was put together, we did have a pre-op meeting with the city and they offered some suggestions for how the parking could be reorganized for additional setbacks and buffers and better circulation and that kind of thing. So I'm sure they'll take all of that into consideration. But what you see here as far as the building, you can see a piece labeled as Phase One, and that's the existing church building, which they plan to renovate. Adaptive reuse of that building, they've had some structural engineer, engineering assessments and they believe it's in a good enough condition to rework. And then phase two would be new construction, also office taking up the majority of what's left of that main site. So if you want to go to the next slide in a little bit more detail, focusing in on that corner. Again, what's labeled as office on the left would be the original church building. They're looking at a single tenant for that space. And then for the remainder of the building would be a secondary tenant. That new addition would include a new accessible entrance off of Hamilton Avenue. The existing church is a few feet up from that Hamilton Avenue sidewalk elevation. So once you enter at that point, you see some stairs on the floor plan. There's also a ramp that would get you up to that elevation. Quite a bit of space, kind of, you know, maximizing the space in one hand for the building, but then also kind of holding things back a generous offset from Hamilton for some nice green space. On North Dunfermline, on the left-hand side, you see outdoor gathering labeled. So looking for some very flexible spaces that could be opened up to the community, also available for the tenants of the building. There's also a loading dock and flex area labeled there. A small amount of parallel parking off of Cinnabar Way, and that's labeled as electric and car charging. And then the big piece of building plan to the rear there is labeled as community workshop. One of the primary tenants that they're talking to is Bike Share Pittsburgh and they have a lot of need for assembly of their bikes and stations and maintenance and that kind of thing. And they really like the idea of also occasionally opening that up to the community. And maybe there are some opportunities to have educational programs, whether it's general, the elementary school is just a block away. So just keeping those spaces very open and flexible. The other tenant that they're currently talking to is the district magistrate. So nothing's finalized, but just to give you an idea of what might be in the building. And then I just had some additional notes about the existing versus the proposed zoning, so. That concludes our presentation.
Okay, well, thank you for the presentation. A reminder that there's no public testimony at this time, but we do open the floor, commissioners, for questions or comments. Do we have questions or comments regarding this application? It looks like Commissioner Wu.
Yeah, I just had a comment. I, I think it's really helpful that you showed the, the existing context, what buildings were on the site and how they were kind of in the character of, you know, LNC. Rather than, you know, they weren't really the resident, residential buildings you would expect in, in an R zone. And I also think it's great that that the councilman, councilman is involved in, you know, this project. I, I think, you know, with some of the uses that you described, you know, I, I, I think it's, you know, definitely a, a good good idea for, for, you know, activating the streetscape on Hamilton Avenue and providing a kind of a community hub for, for Homewood.
Very good. Commissioners, any additional comments or questions?
Did you have? I just have like a minor comment. I, I, I second everything that Commissioner Wu said, but I also. I second everything that Commissioner Wu said, but I also add that in the process of figure, like going through the development, parking is a little scary looking at that configuration for the parking. So I definitely feel like that needs to be like considered further as far as like all that kind of sidewalk streetscape is being like kind of bludgeoned by just parking. So I would say like a more sensitive parking design considering how like small and like kind of cozy that development looks in a neighborhood. So I would say that's just a note to consider going forward. But also I think I really appreciate the fact that you added the kind of context of what is going to be in the design so that we have an understanding of like what is your intent, so that we know that there's no nuance there. So I would say to continue, like keep that in, you need to question yourself next time, just keep it in.
Did you have a comment?
No.
Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, I just had echo what everybody else said, so thank you. I think it was a tight presentation. It was helpful to know what you're planning and what's there. I think from the photos you showed, none of the residential fronts on Cinnabar Way, they all.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to confirm. And then I guess, why isn't the parking area included in the rezoning area?
Sorry to clarify, we'll have that corrected for the idiot in like the.
It was being corrected.
Do you have a?
There's a slot where I think you updated it.
Just the zoning map?
Oh, I didn't.
There is a zoning, it's in the briefing room part.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we'll.
I know there was a couple of slots toward the end that actually had the updated.
Okay, that's, I, yeah, I was just.
It does include that. That was a recommendation by Seth to have that included, so it is. It's okay, just we'll have it updated.
No, that was, it would just be more helpful.
Yeah, if you just.
Whatever slot this is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I just glossed over it, so, yeah, thank you.
Just don't want you to have any more parents.
Yeah, no, it is included in the actual council.
Yeah, I know it's super hard to see here, Commissioner, but on this slot toward the end, you could, like it was in, so it's kind of a little cut and paste job that happens from side to side.
No, sorry, the other. The other. It's okay, well, yeah.
One wrong slide, so it's fine.
Does that conclude your?
Yeah, that's all, that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackwell, do you have a question?
Yes, good afternoon. Councilman Kahari, and thank you all for your presentation. Now that you said you had a community meeting with the collaborative in Homewood, did you have any other meetings? And have you spoken with anyone else doing development in Homewood? And any other residents?
As far as formal meetings, they actually went in front of the Homewood group twice because we didn't give proper notice for it to be the official meeting the first time around. So we did present the same presentation at two meetings and then.
And we presented the presentation to Operation Better Block with Jay Gilmore. And we also presented the presentation to Lewis Children's Village, to the Children's Village as well, Walter Lewis as well.
So Commissioner Blackwell.
Yours are all a little part of the Homewood Collaborative. Have you met with any other organizations outside of organizations that's a part of the collaborative in Homewood?
Like Dr. John Wallace. We spoke with Dr. John Wallace, who is head of the Bible Center Church and also associated with Everyday Cafe. We spoke with him on an individual basis. We spoke with the Children's Village, Walter Lewis individually. We spoke with Dr. John Wallace individually. And the collaborative, we spoke with as a whole. Because it was the R N C.
You mean, oh.
R T O, R T O, I'm sorry about that.
Clarified for. Commissioner Blackwell, did you get all of that?
Yes, I did, thank you.
You're welcome. Does that conclude your questions?
Yes, it does, thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Ruiz?
Good afternoon, I just have a couple of questions. So based on what I think I saw during the presentation, are all these buildings vacant?
Yes.
There's only one.
There's.
The ones owned by Andre and Robin.
Okay, so that's the church, the church building that you all said. And because we're talking about changing the zoning code for all of the units, correct? Okay. And then of those other units, are they currently vacant? How many of them are residential? Will they remain residential? Will we lose any available residential housing with, with the zoning code changes?
In, in the area where they were suggesting for the zoning change, there is no residential.
Okay.
And of that, the buildings that are vacant, the former churches vacant.
Bakers Dairy.
Bakers is vacant. And all the way, all the way up to the corner. The only one that isn't vacant is the Phase.
It's the Phase, which is a bar.
Which is a bar restaurant.
And that was one of the unique things of why I was comfortable in moving forward with this because there's not any occupied building within the zoning district that are actually residential. They're all commercial building, one is a bar, which is the Phase. The former Bakers Dairy site, which is with Lawrence Horadu, is converting into a lounge. And then, and then, and then there's a couple of parking lots and then it moves to the vacant lot next to the church. So there's, there's no commercial, I mean, there's no residential dwellings actually within this district, which makes it strange that it's actually was owned as residential because there's no residential there.
And just to clarify too, the residential uses are permitted within the L N C. So you can have a wide range of, whether it's multifamily or, you know, legal two-year residential. Those are still permitted in the L N C.
I have one more question. Of the buildings right now that are currently occupied with tenants in them, are those tenants going to be able to remain there when, you know, not specifically speaking up because the church is empty, but I'm talking about these other areas.
Yeah, there's no, there's no residential dwellings.
Commercial.
Yes, there will be, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they will be.
I'm sorry.
Is there present, she's asking, there presently tenants in the commercial part in that block and there's not?
Yeah, yeah, there's no, yeah, there's no, there's no residential within the footprint.
Commercial.
Commercial.
There is one, there is one. And that's the Phase, the bar restaurant, I believe it's open.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's open, that's.
That's open. And they will remain in that particular.
Yeah.
Rezone.
I would stick to residential, yeah, but.
Yes, they will remain.
Business that is under operation. And that's the formerly known as the Phase Bar, but it's more of a membership club. You got to ring the doorbell, Sonny will let you in.
Don't tell me how I know. Don't tell me how I know.
Does that conclude your questions? Okay, and it looks like Commissioner Blackwell, is your hand raised for another question?
Yeah, just real quick. What was there before the lots? Were they residential or commercial?
It was a church, so.
It was, it was, it was.
The church wasn't on all the lots.
Nine church and it was zoned for, what was the church for?
She, that's not what she's asking.
I'm asking the lots. There, there were structures on the lots before they became lots. Were they commercial or were they residential?
No, they were. It was, it's a church and then five empty lots and then a parking lot.
The question is, what was it before they became vacant lots? That's the question.
Well, how would we? What was the use of the lots?
Right.
When they were occupied?
And if you don't know today, you could probably. You have to go back quite a way. I did look at some maps from like the twenties, you know, there were residences on this area. If you go back 100 years or more, I'd say the last many decades, if not, you know, 50 or more, it's been primarily commercial.
We can research, if you remember. We can research. No, Andre.
Commissioner Blackwell, they're intending on bringing something next session to, you know, if they find something to confirm.
Okay, and the, and the second thing, I appreciate that because these will be questions that the community will come to the next meeting with. It would be good before you come, if you could meet with at least the Community Engagement Center. There's a lot of residents there that are connected because Homewood, as you know, as I'm a resident, if the information doesn't feel like it has been communicated to everyone, not just everyone that's in one group, not just meeting with individuals of one group, but meeting with other individuals, because this is a large development. Just like Freedom Square is. So while I'm not against the development, I just want to ensure that we are clear on what the intentions are with the development and that what's presented is what's going to happen. And I think that there's, there were residents earlier than 100 years ago, so I'd be interested to see that, thank you.
Thank you. If that concludes the questions, then we thank you very much for your time today and your presentation and we'll see you back in two. And have a good rest of your day. Okay, so at this time, that concludes the briefing portion of today. Commissioners, would it be fair and reasonable to only do a 10-minute break and come back at 3:30? Can we agree to that? Okay, very good, thank you. 3:30 we'll be back on. Please and thank you.
We're unmuted.
Thank you. All right, just making sure that we have our court reporter here. Is the court reporter here? And if so, can you identify yourself? Please and thank you.
Is any attendee is.
Any attendee?
Been able to. Okay, she read your.
Thank you so much. Okay, Commissioners. I can see you all.
Okay, this is the court reporter. They just uh put me in as a panelist. I'm here.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Okay, so it's three thirty and we committed to a three thirty start, so I'd like to welcome everyone. This is the hearing and action portion of the Planning Commission meeting for July ninth, twenty twenty four. Hearing means that cases are presented for action by the Planning Commission. During the hearing portion of the Planning Commission meeting, we will take public testimony. And uh instructions will be given because uh this is a hybrid. We'll have some online and, and um what looks like nobody here in person today. We're gonna do some roll call real quick, Commissioners. And uh that way we know who is here. Commissioner Blackwell.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, present. Commissioner Dick.
I know. There we are.
I know you're here. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Gammie?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Kintonia? Uh, he was here. Okay, all right. Uh, Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu?
Here.
And Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
I'm so sorry. O M G. I, that's the second time I think I did that. Commissioner Mazza, you're, you're on my mind. I love it. All right, fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, now that we've gotten roll call out of the way, I'm gonna read through the agenda, and it is as follows. Agenda item A would be approval of minutes. Agenda item B, correspondence. Agenda item C, plan of lots. Agenda item D, hearing and action. Agenda item E is continued hearing and action. And agenda item F is the director's report. Moving up to agenda item A, which is approval of minutes. Commissioners, we are not receipt of any minutes for approval today. Agenda item B is correspondence, and correspondence for July ninth, twenty twenty four is as follows. Regarding item D C P dash Z D R dash twenty twenty three dash zero one eight nine three three thirty eight twelve Foster Street, we are in receipt of correspondence from Chris Dream, resident of Bloomfield. Amy Zeiss, resident of Beachview. Sarah Trobic, Trobovic. Hopefully I said that right. Executive Director, Lawrenceville Corp. And David Brigham, Executive Director of Lawrenceville United. Regarding the same item at thirty eight twelve Foster Street, we are in receipt of correspondence from David V. Off who is the Arts Management at C M U. And a junior candidate at Pitt Law. For item D C P dash M P Z C dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero nine four one for sixty four oh one Penn Avenue, we are in receipt of correspondence from David V. Off. Management C M U, candidate at Pitt Law. And uh second item is a duplicate from uh David V. Off at C M U and candidate at Pitt Law. Completing the correspondence, thank you. Uh, we are at agenda item C, which is plan of lots. Under plan of lots, we have one item. That one item is as follows. D C P dash lot dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero four seven four at Fullerton Street. This is a major subdivision in the Central Business District. Presenting that here today is Mr. Shevki.
Thank you. Um, this is the subdivision of one parcel into two parcels. The proposed parcel E one would have frontage on Logan Street, Fullerton Street, and Bedford Avenue. It would be sixty nine thousand two hundred eighty one square feet in area. The proposed parcel E two would have frontage on Fullerton Street, Logan Street, and Wiley Avenue would be forty two thousand four hundred fifteen square feet in area. The subject property is currently vacant, and this is a major subdivision that was first reviewed by the Planning Commission on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four. Um, staff's recommended motion is to approve the Fullerton Street subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Shevki. At this time, we open the floor for public testimony. And I'm sorry, it looks like somebody's, is that Commissioner? Blackwell?
Yeah, I got a hit of myself.
Oh, okay, no problem. I couldn't see the light was glaring, so you'll have to forgive me as well. We open the floor for public testimony, and it looks like, um, is there a hand raised?
There is a hand raised. Um, Craig Dunham, you can unmute yourself. Please state and spell your name for the record, and you have three minutes to provide your testimony.
Um, my name is Craig Dunham. Thank you on behalf of the Planning Commission. I represent the Pittsburgh Penguins. Pittsburgh Arena Real Estate Redevelopment, which is the applicant in this case, and here to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. Um, at this time, are there any other hands raised? All right. Okay, so um no additional hands raised. Commissioners, do I have a motion from the floor to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza, for the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammie, for the second. I'm gonna do roll call. Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton Falk. Aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Gammie?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil?
Abstain.
Thank you, Commissioner Kintonia? Uh, Commissioner Ruiz?
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. It's a pass. Okay, so moving on to agenda item D, which is hearing and action. Under hearing and action, we have one item under D, which is as follows. D C P dash H N dash twenty twenty four dash zero zero four zero five at one sixty Warden Street. This is a historic nomination of the Pittsburgh Stained Glass Studios in the West End neighborhood. Presenting here today is Ms. Quinn.
Hello, Commissioners. My name's Sarah Quinn. I'm the Preservation Planner for the city. Um, as you mentioned, this is a nomination for the um Pittsburgh Stained Glass Studios. Um, the building in question is on the screen. This was a purpose-built building in nineteen oh two. It's located at one sixty Warden Street in the West End. If you could go to the next slide, please. Um, because this was designed particularly for stained glass studio, it's very functional for those folks. Um, you can see the smaller um addition to the rear. Um, please move forward. Next slide, some interior um pieces of their art, which aren't under our purview, but next one, please. Okay, if you could go back to the very beginning. So in the interest of time, I won't, I won't give you too much information right now. But as I said, the building was built in nineteen oh two, um nineteen twenty nine, it was purchased, the building and the business were purchased by the Weaver family. It's still in the hands of the Weaver family. Um, Kurt Weaver is the current owner. Um, he is very, very prominent in the stained glass artistic community. And um he is a co-nominator of this, so it's, it's the family, the family wants to do it, so um that's really what I have for you, the highlights. Um, if you have any questions, I would certainly be happy to answer those. Um, sure.
All right. Um, so at this time, that concludes uh the presentation here. Uh, the doors open for public testimony. Are there any hands raised? No.
No, yes.
All right, so at this time, uh Commissioners, we would take a motion for a positive recommendation to council. Do we have a motion from uh Commissioner Gammie? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Mazda? I'm gonna do uh roll call. Uh, Commissioner Blackwell?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Burton Falk, aye. Commissioner Dick?
Aye.
Aye, very good. Uh, Commissioner Gammie?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Mazza?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neil?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruiz?
Aye.
Thank you, and Commissioner Wu?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you so much for coming. All right, we concluded um agenda item D, moving on to agenda item B, which is a continued hearing and action. We have one item. It is as follows. Zoning Code text amendment, Council Bill twenty twenty three dash twenty one ninety seven. Action to be determined. This is a text amendment to add temporary managed communities as primary use allowed in the Golden Triangle, G T, riverfront mixed use, RIV M U, riverfront north shore, uh, riverfront general industrial, and riverfront industrial mixed use zoning districts. Presenting that here this afternoon is Mr. Lehman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is uh, uh probably the third or fourth update on this particular council bill and the related Fair Housing Act amendments uh that, that we have been talking about and working on uh now for a number of months. Uh, the current status of this council bill is the uh council member sponsors have agreed to extend the timeline uh for the commission to act on it. Uh, we will be following up on that uh on the timing uh uh as soon as we can, and then uh we uh do have a draft of the Fair Housing Act amendments, which includes uh uh incorporation of and acknowledgement of uh the, the temporary managed community uh deed and interest uh as was um discussed with our uh commission chairs, uh including uh Commissioners O'Neil, Burton Falk, uh Ruiz, and Kintonia. Uh, the, uh, and, and uh as part of the working group that we uh brought together to uh to discuss and work on uh the broader, both to address that issue uh and, and opportunities for housing around homelessness, but also to provide a, a responsible and more streamlined uh uh group housing categories within our zoning code to address um what we've heard as concerns from housing advocates, from the Department of Human Services, from Allen County uh and others around challenges that they face in creating uh uh and uh creating group housing types in the city. Uh, and so we're very excited to launch that. We are hoping to launch the um, the Engage P G H page for that project very soon uh this week. And uh we will be following up with the uh working group members uh to let them know and receive further comment, and that once we put the Engage page up, that'll be available for public comment and review as well. Um, and then uh we expect to have that back for briefing on uh in two weeks uh with the commission, the twenty third of July, and then uh for a public hearing on September third. Uh, and that. Any, any questions for me?
Yeah, um, I'll make a comment. You know, we appreciate all the work that's being done uh and your diligence, so greatly appreciated. We'll see you back on this matter later.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, that concludes agenda item E. We'll move on to agenda item F, which is the director's report. Um, is there a director's report for today?
I think we've had a long enough meeting today, so we'll spare the director's report.
Commissioners, appreciate you. Thank you. Since that concludes agenda item F, Commissioners, this is the time where we all get to uh make a motion from the floor to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, good job, everybody. Have a good rest of your day.
You too.
Thank you.